It is November 17th, 2020, and I'd like to call this board meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening, and at this time, would you please stand for the pledge?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you a recommended agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Tom and a second from Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous. Motion passes. Next is recognitions with Joey Purple.
Pandemic and COVID, we've obviously not had recognitions in the same manner that we had last year, but this is our first recognition for employee of the month. So I wanted to publicly say how much we appreciate Renee Jones, who was the bookkeeper at Sharon Elementary School, and we appreciate the work that she's done. She's been with our school district for a lot of years, and Renee has always been, done a great job. There were multiple comments that I could have stood here for another 30 minutes and read all of those about Renee and all the great things that she does and what a great employee that she is. So we just want to say congratulations to Renee Jones for being the employee of the month, and we want to say thank you to Jimmy Nix for sponsoring our employee of the month.
Very good. Thank you, Joey. Next is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve our consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Tom and a second from Darla. All in favor? Unanimous. Motion passes. Next is public participation. Board policy BCBI sets forth the rules for public participation, and copies are available at the back table. Anyone requesting to speak to the board must sign a form indicating they have read and will follow the requirements of the policy. Tonight, we have four speakers that have requested to speak, and public participation is designed to allow the citizens to speak to the board and board members. We do not respond during this part of the agenda unless we have specific questions for the presenter. So when you come forward, please introduce yourself and tell us your topic of concern. First is Albin Nastal.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. A few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to speak at the last forum regarding the redistricting. I think some of you might remember me from there. I spoke. Last week, we were informed that there were no requests, no recommendations for a change on the redistricting, and we were all very saddened to hear, at least a lot of the people that I know, specifically from three of the neighborhoods that are severely impacted by the redistricting of Otwell to Hendricks. Three of us are on the Kelly Mill corridor, Sienna, Thorngate, and Barrett Downs. And I know that you guys, as a board for the county, you have to address the needs of the county as a whole. I know it's not easy. I understand that you have to look at growth. I understand you have to look at population. I understand that things like distance aren't really on your agenda, but when it comes to us as families, when we have kids that are still districted for Central, and we have extracurricular activities, and we have to drive the length of the county all the way to the other end to pick up kids after school, that puts a severe impact for a lot of us, especially those at work that have to drive, that can't no longer rely on public transportation for schools or for long bus rides that are going to take the kids all the way to school. It's tough to come up here and ask, because I understand that you guys have Otwell that's apparently busting at the seams. Looking at the map, I think that there could be better redistricting to the north, where I see kids that right now live on 369 that are still districted for Otwell that could probably move to north. That can probably help alleviate some of it. But we're redistricting to a school that's on the west end of the county. I mean, I understand you built a school that's, you can't take from the south because you have Vickery. You can't take from the north, so you're forced to push as far east as possible. And I completely understand the logistics, but we are only two miles away from the school. We have various routes to get to the school. Right now, we have feeders that go into Central. My kids are in FFA. There's other kids that feed Central for school, for sports, for band, for a lot of other things. And you're asking our kids to be moved all the way to a school that's, quite frankly, districted for West. All their friends are going to be West, their teachers, the community that they're going to know, all of it's going to be for West. And then you're going to ask them to then shift back to Central. It's not an easy move. It's going to impact a lot of us severely when it comes to commutes, when it comes to being able to choose whether our kids can do extracurricular activities. I mean, it's drive, people that have to drive and get on the 400, and can drop their kids off at school, and are going to be forced to go in the opposite direction. So I can't speak for all the neighborhoods. I can only speak for myself, and my ask is simple. I know today is the last time that we have to speak, and I know after this, there will be no appeal process, so I understand this is a final decision, and I'm asking just for reconsideration, just to allow Sienna and Thorngate, which is a small little section on Kelly Mill, keep them in Otwell, please. That's all I ask.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Pounds.
If you can hear me, I'm sorry my voice isn't hearing you. Thank you for letting us speak. Just wanted to raise a few issues or concerns about the guidelines. I know that you'll be discussing something this evening. We're not sure what. Masks are, of course, one of the biggest issues. It's one of the only tools we have, and everybody's feeling fatigued at this point, including, you know, everyone is. But the kids are seeing a lot less mask usage at school. A lot of their peers and some of their teachers, and going into the holiday season, there are going to be a lot of get-togethers, a lot of celebrations, and inevitably, the numbers are going to continue to rise. So we do ask, like, if you would please consider mandating masks. It would make it a lot easier on the teachers to be able to provide some education, to be able to provide some guidance and answer some questions, and also to be able to address issues like extracurricular activities. A lot of people have mentioned that, okay, well, okay, well, we're masked in schools, but then we'll go to a football game, or we'll go to something else, and everybody's clustered together and whatnot. And it's true, it doesn't make sense. So maybe it would enable us as a community and the schools to be able to provide some education. I don't, can I address the virtual learning quickly? Is that okay? We appreciate everything, every opportunity that has been given to us, but it's been pretty rocky for FVA. A lot of teachers have reached out to me and said they cannot give their virtual students the same curriculum, the same material as they can. They're face-to-face students. My kids are face-to-face for everything except for one class, and we appreciate the opportunity to go in for that one class as well. I was just wondering if anything is being considered to streamline a little bit more, to streamline the virtual students with the face-to-face students, and also that would perhaps give the kids who have been exposed, who have, who do need to quarantine but maybe don't want to because of that two-week gap in their education. You know, a lot of districts have adopted some type of, you know, all-in-one teaching. So I don't know if the district is considering any of that, but I know it's a lot harder for the teachers and for the students to be completely separate on those formats. So I just, that's just one issue I wanted to address, but I guess that's it. I mean, everything else kind of goes along with it, the education itself. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Riley Pounds.
Hello. I'm just going to quickly go through a set of key points that I've organized regarding my grievances for the virtual academy system.
Now, unfortunately, the virtual academy is not on the agenda. I assume that's your mother.
I'm sorry, just virtual learning in general.
Virtual learning?
I'm sorry, I missed the phrase.
Well, that's what, like I say, she made the comments already. I don't know if we, as a board, decide, you know, how deep we want to get into virtual learning.
I think we should. If it's part of the guidelines, when we put guidelines out there, we talked about virtual, then I think it's fine.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just don't want anybody in the audience that may be here that wanted to say something, and we didn't let them. So I just want to make sure the rules were clear. Go ahead. Thank you.
So the first thing I'd like to address is that with everything that, to me, is an issue within the system, nothing is the fault of the teachers. I fully understand the stress that this pandemic and everything that has been done to mitigate this, and I fully understand the stress this has had on the teachers, but, and I understand that there, a lot of teachers are struggling to provide equal quality of education between their in-person and online classes. But unfortunately, certain aspects of the system have put undue stress on teachers and have created problems that have trickled down into the issues I am going to address. First off, I'd like to briefly mention scheduling. Now, the fluid structure of the FVA system has, for the most part, I'm not afraid to admit, it has been beneficial when it comes to me getting my work in on time, but unfortunately, it does have its issues. The main part is the lack of accountability, structure, and mixed with a low level of student-teacher interaction, has made it very hard for me personally to really structure and maintain a consistent and, oh, just good work schedule for school, and has been hard to really get my stuff in on time and prioritize work. Next, I'd like to address some teacher-student communication. I feel like with what is currently in the system is not totally adequate to, for me as a student, to communicate with my teacher. Like, the, it's learning messenger that we are provided is, like, does allow us to communicate, but at times when it is necessary for rapid communication or extensive communication, say for a help session or asking help on a group of questions, it is not always the best option. And while some teachers, like my algebra teacher, does provide weekly or biweekly help sessions that are run by calls, it is, this form of communication is not, is intermittent, and on top of previous scheduling issues I've addressed and future scheduling issues, I'll address in a second, classes tend, and work tends to overlap throughout the week, which makes it hard to attend these sessions and reap the rewards they provide. Leading off that with interaction, I'm, there is, overall, with, through my schoolwork, there is not, I do not get really a good amount of interaction with my teacher, while some such, especially my Spanish teacher, does provide lessons that are recorded, and she personally provides this stuff. Majority of my work is resource-based. I haven't even heard the voices of most of my teachers. Most of the material I get is groups of YouTube videos, online resources, and group, like, notes and study guides based off that, as well as random worksheets. And for me personally, as a student, that is not a system I'm used to, and I have not been able to study effectively with this system. And lastly, on to workload. Overall, the main issue I would have with the, my main grievance with the FVA system is that while my school alliance has a block schedule, which splits my classes into A and B classes, meaning I have a certain number of classes on the A day, a certain number of classes on the B day, the, this system does not have this, but the teachers still provide the daily amount of work as if it was. So I have a daily amount of work for each class for every day instead of every other day, for every class, giving me two weeks, two weeks' worth of work per week, which has been hard to manage, frankly. And usually, for my, most of my classes, work has spanned throughout the entire day, and I have not had a free weekend throughout the entire year. I usually have to ask for extensions on my work. Okay, that's pretty much all I have to address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Morton.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I just want to start off by quickly introducing the fact that I have four children that have gone through the Forsyth County school system. We've been in this school system for the past 19 years, and we're still continuing. That being said, my two children currently go face-to-face. They were adamant about face-to-face. We appreciate, in this unprecedented time, the challenges that the district has gone through, that above and beyond that the teachers are going through, and nobody has the right answer. We all understand this, so I'm going to try and be as respectful as possible. I have a junior who fought me because I begged her to go virtual at the beginning of the year, or at least hybrid. She's in an educational track where she wants to be a special ed teacher. It was very important to her that she attended face-to-face, so she was able to partake in all of the presentations and the internship if it was going to be a possibility the second semester. She is not, grades don't come easy for her. She struggles in certain courses, but she works three times as hard as my middle-schooler who's in advanced classes, and she felt that she would not be able to be successful if she went all virtual. That being said, two months into school, she has become depressed. She is high anxiety, mainly over the masks. We are a big proponent of masks. We have two people in our household that are at risk. She understands it. I lost my mother-in-law during COVID. We were not allowed to see her before she died because she was isolated in the hospital. This has affected us deeply. My junior has stopped attending the football games with her friends because they were wearing masks and trying to social distance. There was nothing there. I could go on and on and on, and I know you've heard it all before, but I would respectfully request to please, please, look at mandating the masks, because it's causing a rift between the students that are masking and those that aren't masking. I understand the personal freedoms of it, but I also think that if people don't want to wear masks, then they do have that option of being virtual, just like they could flip it and say, if you're at risk, stay home and do virtual. There's no one-size-fits-all, and I understand that. And I know I'm time-limited, so I'll try to move on quickly. At one point, a few weeks ago, my junior was quarantined for possible close contact. She immediately went ballistic, feeling guilty. She's exposed to our household. She's done, you know, all this craziness due to the depression and the anxiety and all that. I am very confused, as well as a lot of people I know. Why is the sibling not automatically quarantined, unless you choose to go and test your child, which is a personal decision for each family? It's not mandatory for a sibling living in the same household to be quarantined because of that secondary contact possibility, but they're living in the same house with someone who's had close contact. So why is that not part of the policy for being open and face-to-face to try to slow the spread? COVID is not going away. I don't think it's going to go away. I don't want to live in a bubble forever, but the overwhelming spread, especially right now with the numbers spiking up and some of the schools closing down temporarily, it's just, I don't understand, for lack of a better word, the logic of not quarantining another student that lives in the same house as another one that's been mandatory quarantined. That being said, with the schools closing, I know Denmark and Lambert had shut down. There's other rumors from the kids, because that's where we get most of our information. We're all on that website at 5:00 PM and watching it at 9:00, and, you know, sometimes it gets up there later, and that's fine, but we all live and breathe off those numbers and what our kids are telling us, because while the goal is transparency, it's not always as transparent when you're on the other side of it waiting for the information. So I'm wondering if there is a magic number of what mandates a school shutting down for two weeks? Is it based off of active cases for that current week? Is it based off of the week before and then the reported numbers that next week, where it has to equal something because the symptom, it's not 10 to 14 days past the positive test? Or is it, does it include the quarantine numbers as well? Is it based on a percentage? So I would like to know that, because I think, just as a parent in the district, I know that that's a big confused issue for a lot of us, and if there is an answer somewhere, I haven't been able to find it. And when a school does shut down, is there a cleaning, like a deep clean process that goes into play? Is there something that occurs before the school's allowed to reopen? Or is it just a, let's, there's a lot of cases right now, let's slow the spread, shut down for two weeks, so the symptoms are, you know, played out or whatever, and then come back in two weeks? Is there, I'm not sure of the policy of when the school shuts down based on however many cases, and I hope I'm making sense, because I feel a little intimidated, to be honest with you. I'm not used to getting up and speaking.
No, you're doing fine. You're doing fine.
We're all parents, too. I appreciate that. And on top of that, why, when a school does shut down, are the extracurriculars still going on? And let me say, on the tail end of that question, I'm huge. We've been in this county for 19 years. I had kids that went to the same high school. I have special-needs students that graduated from a different high school that didn't participate, but we went to every football game. We went to everything. I had another one in drama, I brought a middle-schooler in drama, and I was there helping separate seating for a play they put on last weekend to separate the families by six feet or more. Every student on stage wore a mask, whether they spoke or not. It was amazing, because it's important for them to be able to interact and have as much of a normal experience as possible, and we all want that for our kids. But if a school has so many cases that it's closing, why is there still a football game going on? So I don't know if that, if there's an answer to that, or if it's based off what the principal is deciding, or if it's based off of a county policy. I think a lot of us aren't sure where the actual decisions, when it comes to each school, is coming from. Is that left up to the school, as opposed to y'all and Dr. Bearden, and what is coming out to play? You know, you walk into, I won't say the name of the high school, but, and I'm sure they're all the same, and there's signs up with the mascot strong and masks on and all this, and my daughter is proud to be a part of that school, but she's saddened and developing emotional distress over this, where we're now seeking outside help, because she doesn't understand, she feels like it's hypocrisy, and she's very, I'm the first one to throw my kid under the bus. When someone does something wrong, I'm like, was it my kid? You know, like, I'm not, I don't think they're angels all the time or anything, but she is a compassionate person. I think part of it has to do with the fact that she has a special-needs sibling with severe health issues. She doesn't understand why things can be encouraged, but they're not mandated. If there's a teacher who makes a joke about her not, you know, not comfortable sitting next to someone who doesn't wear a mask, and she got told she was a mask bully by another teacher, because she asked a student two days in a row, please put your mask on, or can you sit over there, but they can't change the seating because it's for the contact tracing. The kids need to be there in the same spots, but yet she's forced to sit next to someone who doesn't wear a mask, and she is not comfortable doing so. So then she wanted to go, you guys sent that survey out, all the schools did, about second semester. She was going to give up her internship possibility and just go all virtual or hybrid because she just can't do it anymore. I'm very worried about her. I'm worried about my middle-schooler. I'm worried about all of our students and our community. I don't think that kids should be forced to have to make a choice based on what they want to do as a career or based on their experience in middle school, high school, elementary school. These are supposed to be the best years of our kids' lives, and nobody could have predicted that this insanity was going to be going on, but it's here. And again, I stand on what I said at the beginning. Everyone is doing the best that they can, and I greatly appreciate it. We would not be in this county for as long as we've had, we have been. If I was unhappy with our schools and our teachers, we would have moved our kids somewhere else. We're very blessed to live in Forsyth County and to have the resources that we do have available, but there's got to be a better way. And I just don't understand some of the policies, because maybe I'm failing as a mother. So I'm sorry, I'm going over my time, but I greatly appreciate it.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Next is Larry Hamel with our finance report. Larry?
I'm sorry.
You're next. Finance report.
I thought you said somebody named to speak, and I was just like.
Oh, okay. You were waiting for another.
You.
Yeah, it's you, Larry. Sorry.
I was like, ah, there's another Larry here? Wow. That never happens. So tonight, we're going to talk about the two October 2020 financial statements. As always, we try to keep Goal Three in mind when we present the financial statements to you. So for October 31st, 2020, we started off with $38 million at the beginning of the month, and we ended about $36 million. So the tax revenue came in like we thought it might, a little bit better than we thought based on historical averages, and we were able to keep enough money coming in to have the money during this lowest of the low months to make sure we had enough funds for payroll at the end of the month. And of course, with November 1st starting, you know, the money starts rolling in large amounts. One thing I do want to point out is the local property tax was 17.5, which is above, a little bit above average historical numbers. Last year, we were really high. We were at 28.3, so you can see the kind of difference there. And I'm going to point something out later on another screen about that. So on the revenue side, you can see we were at $112.5 million. Basically, we collected 23.85%. This time last year, we were at 26.2. So back to the property tax collections. We've collected $30 million through the month of October. This time last year, we were about 38. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. So that's part of the difference in the percentages. The other thing, of course, if you look at QBE, we only got $73 million collected. Of course, with the austerity cuts, we had over $80 million this time. That's another $8 million, and that makes up the majority of why we're a little bit behind right now this time of the year compared to last year. Of course, the austerity part of it, you can control. On the expense side, some good news there. Last year, this time, we were at 34.38. We're at 33.36. We're a full percent behind in terms of spending money, which doesn't mean it's bad, but it just might be there's some timing issues as well going on. But I look at it at the point that, you know, 1% behind last year, if you look at the current budget of $494, that means right now, we're spending about $5 million lower than we would be at this time if it was the same as last year, which is a good thing. On the debt service cash, we've got $76 million in the bank. This time last year, we had 54.4. All the accounts are slightly up except for this last five, and of course, we just made a payment in August, so that brought it down a little bit, and it's coming in slowly. We were 11.7, so we're not too far behind. If we look at the investment summary, we're at $174 million, almost $174.5 million. This time last year, we were $116 million, and of course, the fund, 306 LGLB fund for the 2018-20 bonds, of course, has a lot more money. Since we just issued bonds, it's 123. This time last year, we were at 71. I will say this, we're spending the money at a pretty good pace, and we'll use up a majority of that money by the time we get opening schools next year.
Hard to think of that as we're building at a pretty fast pace.
Correct. Good news here. We have $132.5 million collected through October 2020. The October month was a good month. Compared to the previous month, it's down, but don't forget, last month, we had that extra $1.3 million come in. That was part of the money that was part of an audit done by George Partner Revenue for prior-year SPOS collections that they said were owes to us. So if you take that $1.3 million out, we're actually kind of ahead where we were last month, and we're up 8.22% this time last year. As you can see, the percentages going back to May, we've got a pretty good clip going here in terms of how things have happened. If we look at total average this time last year in October, it was 3.3 million. So on average, we're up about 110. For the last 12 months, we're up about $348,000 per month on average, and just recently, the last 12 months, we're up about $241,000 over the previous collections for the rest here in terms of how things have happened. If we look at total average this time last year in October, it was 3.3 million. So on average, we're up about 110. For the last 12 months, we're up, we're up about $348,000 per month on average. And just recently, the last 12 months, we're up about $241,000 over the previous collections for the rest of the time. So we're at a pretty good clip in terms of what we're collecting. So for example, in four months, we'll collect almost a million dollars more because of the new averages than we would have for the first part of the collections beginning of the year.
So last month, we talked about putting an asterisk or something so that we would know, you know, years down the road, that this was an anomaly because of the money that they found.
Right.
On that month. So could we do that so that, you know, forever in the 2020 record that that, you know, August collection there was not really 4.9 million, that it's from other money?
Correct.
And then also, is there a way that we can make that if we're ultimately going to put that into the SPOS for revenues at some point? Can it, will it always be included in this report then? It could be collected then, but?
Well, what we could do is, I can always make a split line there and just show it split up somehow, and we can do it that way.
Just because, because it affects the average, it affects everything.
Correct.
I think that's what we're seeing in the past, another line.
Yeah, just, because it just skews everything a little bit.
Okay.
But that's okay.
All right.
Does that sound good? Yes.
Now, we're going to look at the disbursements by elementary. We're at $4 million this year. At this time, last year, we were at 4.9. Because schools are going through COVID reductions and stuff, we are seeing a great reduction both in the amount of money they're receiving and the amount of money they're paying out. And it's almost a third of what it was this time last year. And of course, with the schools not being able to have, rent their buildings out the weekends and have any kind of events, that's the main reason that's going on. The middle schools, this time last year, they were about $1.84 million. Again, they're about a third down in terms of their activity compared to last year. And the high schools, at 4.65, they're at 4.67, that are not really much change. Their activity is about half of what it was last year. They have a lot more activity in terms of collecting dues and things like that during the year that don't affect them in terms of students being there or not being there at school virtually or not virtually. And then lastly, if we look at the total, we've got $10.1 million in there. We were slightly below that by almost a million dollars. And then the percentages have changed dramatically. If you look at the high school, it's 46 now. This time last year, it was only 41. And that's difference because elementary school has gone down to 40, where it was 43, and middle schools have gone down to 14, where it was 16. So you kind of see the shift of the funds going more percentage-wise to the high schools. And that's the financials for October 2020. Any questions?
Thank you, Larry.
All right.
Next is Joey Perkel, and the first action item is approve the final 2021-22 district lines for Hendrix Middle School.
Last week at your work session, I presented the staff and started by talking, by mentioning that the two primary objectives for redistricting was to populate any new schools that are being built, as well as to relieve overcrowding at existing schools. We talked a lot about all of the information from the public forums, as well as all of the online feedback. The staff reviewed all of that. At that major meeting last week, we talked about the fact that we felt as a staff that there were, that we did not recommend any changes. And so obviously, due to that, then I would ask the superintendent to make a recommendation, and we're going to do this by middle school and, and high school. So at this point, I'd ask the superintendent for a recommendation for the district lines to open Hendrix Middle School.
I'd recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Darla?
Second.
And a second from Kristen. Any more discussion?
I, I just want to say that thank you for separating it out, because I do want to take just a moment to talk about each one of them, because this being my first process going through redistricting and going out and talking and listening to people, there were really two factors for the middle school. One is, obviously, I do believe that the objectives help. Having to alleviate overcrowding and to populate a new school really helped drive some of the decision. And when we have a school, it's a wonderful school in downtown coming that's older and it's built for 1,050 students, and then you have a new school that's being built down the road that has for 1,500 or 1,475, you're going to have a further span where you can reach out and get more students for that school. So that was the first thing I looked at. And then the second thing, talking with a lot of parents and, you know, teachers, is that, you know, it's all about what's wrong with my student, what's my student going to get, things like that. And so you couldn't accommodate everything that was going out there, you know, that everybody wanted. And so for me, I had to look and see at the education of the student, what was best for those students. Then it was, okay, what's best for the school or that neighborhood, that area? And then as a community as a whole. And for me, to sit there and try to accommodate every situation, it doesn't, it doesn't work. And so for me, I had to sit back and say, hey, let's take a moment, let's look at the community, let's look at the education that's going to be provided. And yes, there are going to be some adjustments somebody's going to have to make, but at the end of the day, I think this was best for, for the middle school lines. So thank you for your time on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. You can go on to the district lines for East Forsyth High School.
Okay. So at this point, then, I would ask the superintendent for a recommendation for the district lines to populate East Forsyth High School.
Recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Darla and a second from Tom. Any further discussion?
I just want to say kind of the same thing, you know, with the, the objectives and working on that. And I know each one of us up here read all the comments and looked through everything. And, you know, even to bothering the staff so much, looking at future projections and looking at these lines and the amount of students that are growing in each section of the community. And I think that Mr. Cleveland said something last week that was, you know, really can't think about today, this year, or next year. We have to think about the future and what we're doing with the high school lines. And so there are a lot of areas that I think we, as a board, sat down and talked about and looked over at the numbers, and we were like, you know what? Future growth, future where the potential is, and to make sure that our schools have the equal opportunity, that I believe that these lines are the best for the community. Thank you for your time on that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Wes. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Next, they are the redistricting out-of-district rules with Joey again.
Okay. Okay, so the out-of-district process for redistricted students, well, and the out-of-district process for, for everyone, actually, opens December the 1st and closes on January the 18th. But for the students who have been redistricted, we basically follow the same out-of-district process and the out-of-district guideline that we did when we opened Denmark, with the exception of one, and I'll point that out. But I'll just quickly go over those. Obviously, rising 12th graders who have been redistricted will remain at their current school for the 21-22 school year by completing an out-of-district form. As East High School will not, will open with grades nine through 11. Students who have completed two years of the same CTAE career pathway then will not be, and that pathway is not offered at the school where they have been redistricted to attend, will be able to stay in order to complete the pathway. The other, the one that's a little bit different than when we opened Denmark is the North Forsyth High School, West Forsyth High School, and Forsyth Central High School students who are currently a varsity level letter contributor on the varsity football team at these schools will be allowed to remain at their current school. As East Forsyth High School will not open with a varsity football team for the 21-22 school year. That's different because Denmark did open with a varsity football team, and it's only that one sport that they will not have. And students who are currently involved in the orchestra program at Forsyth Central and West High would be able to stay, as you remember, that you all felt that that was important to consider when we opened Denmark, because it was kind of a unique send-along program that didn't fit in with the CTAE career pathway program. And then we talk about the siblings of redistricted, redistricted students, siblings of redistricted high school students who apply for an out-of-district for one of the reasons listed above, may apply for an out-of-district as well as we would not want to separate those, have a family to have a, a high school student in two different high schools, or have two different children in two different high schools. Middle school, rising eighth graders can apply to stay to finish their last year. Their siblings can apply, but for the one year only. And then again, the process opens on December the 1st and closes on January the 18th. Just to remind you that we certainly will look at every single one of these, and we'll look at all of the cases, case by case, to see if there are anything, any cases and how they fit in with the, the process and the guidelines that we have set forth for the out-of-district process.
Okay, I would recommend approval of the redistricting out-of-district rules.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Tom and a second?
Second for discussion, just to push things.
Yeah, it's second from Kristen. Discussion.
Just a quick thing, just to remind, like, one of the common questions I got, and it's a simple one, was just to remind, even the seniors to do the out-of-district form, just anybody that's eligible, just still do the form even though they can stay back. It was just, it's a housekeeping thing that was handy to, for you to have.
Yeah, that, that just, that just allows us to keep a record of it, and we have it in the system so that if, if there's ever a question, we can go back and know that, you know, that, that it wasn't out-of-district issue.
I just remember it was one of the common questions I got last time all the time.
And do be aware of the dates. We were trying to plan, this year in particular is extra hard because we have both virtual and, and face-to-face. So the dates are real important this year because we need to fit it in this process in order to get our resources and teachers lined up and, and all the processes that go on with this.
Well, and that's, and you're right, that's a great point, because I do have a lot of times people to say, well, you know, why is the deadline when it is, and why is it so early? But you're right, we have to have the deadline then, because there's a lot of work that has to happen in order for the, the Hill Center, for Kathy Carpenter and for Tim Amerson and all those folks to do the roll-up number, and then for Tim Amerson to get the projection, projected enrollments, in order for HR department to get the staff.
You thought voting and counting votes were hard, right?
Right. So that all has to happen pretty soon, and we have to really work hard to get that done, even with the deadline. We, we have the deadline as late as we possibly can. But we will advertise that, and we always do. Jennifer helps with that to let us know, parents know that it is the deadline, and we stand firm to, to the deadline we have to.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Next, thank you, Joey. Next is Jennifer Cratchelo with, the first thing is the Brenda Co. Outdoor Classroom.
Good evening. You've seen in advance the beautiful write-up that Ms. McCrery has submitted to honor Brenda Co. Brenda Co. impacted the lives of many students, families, and colleagues during her teaching career. She joined the Mustang family at Little Mill Middle School when the school opened in August 20200. I can't say that now that we're into double digits, 2007, sorry. And worked tirelessly on the behalf of not only her special education students, but all students until her tragic and unexpected passing in January of 2013. She was a relentless advocate for children, and I know many of you have interacted with her. I can still remember her coaching the seventh grade boys' basketball team at Little Mill Middle School. And so on behalf of Little Mill Middle School and the administration, I would like to ask the superintendent to please recommend that the outdoor classroom at Little Mill Middle School be named the Brenda Co. Outdoor Classroom.
I recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Wes and a second from Tom. All in favor? Unanimous motion passes.
Thank you.
Next are the legislative priorities, also with Jennifer Cratchelo.
Last week, I presented the legislative priorities to you, and we did make one addition to the end underneath supporting the state and local partnership. We added expand capacity for virtual learning. So at this time, I would like to ask the superintendent to please recommend approval of the 2021 legislative priorities.
Recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Kristen and a second from Tom. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Next are the establishment of the board meeting dates. You'll see them on your screen. I assume you've reviewed them. Do we have a recommendation from superintendent to?
They're very, very similar to this current year. I would recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Tom and a second from Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Next, we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel per our affidavit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Tom and a second from Kristen. All in favor?
Personnel A1, B1 through 5, and C1 and 2.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Tom, second from Kristen. Yes, thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to share with the board and the public tonight, you know, we're in constant consultation with the Department of Health. We, we get our guidance from them in terms of when a student or staff member contracts the virus and then the contact tracing that we have to do. I actually have a meeting coming up this week with our local director of the Department of Health, and going to share our data and Forsyth County schools, and just talk about the protocols that are in place, and maybe do some brainstorming to see if we need to make any changes. As was mentioned earlier tonight in the board meeting by one of our speakers, and, and you know this as, as a board, we certainly have seen an uptick in cases, both with students and staff, over the last couple of weeks. As of today, we're about at 3.5% of our students district-wide that are under a quarantine right now. Percentage-wise, that's not necessarily an alarming number. However, it is certainly a higher percentage than we have experienced, you know, throughout the first semester. And so, you know, we're constantly following the data, tracking the data. So I'm looking forward to the conversation with the Department of Health to see if, together, we might look at protocols that would be more impactful in terms of mitigating the spread of the virus, which is all, what we're all trying to do. I also want to say, I know typically, we do not respond to the public during public comment, but a really good question was asked tonight that I think needs to be addressed, and that is, you know, how do we as a school district determine when a school needs to shut down? We have had to shut down two schools over the past few weeks. Lambert High School closed for a couple of weeks. They are now back open. And Denmark High School, as you know, is open as well. There is not a hard number that we use, but there are two questions that we ask, and I ask this in consultation with the building principal. Question number one is instruction being compromised. Are the number of cases that we have with students and staff and the number of students being quarantined, is that interrupting instruction? If the answer to that is yes, then we need to talk further. The second guiding question we ask, are we hearing from our community, students, staff, parents, that are genuinely now very leery about coming to school because of the number of cases and the number of students quarantining? And don't want to put a hard number on it, because I'll tell you why. We have cases in our school system where we have schools with smaller populations. They may only have one or two cases, but because of the number of students that have to quarantine, percentage-wise, they might have 10 or 12% of their kids out with only one or two cases. And talking to those principals, instructions not being compromised, you know, there's not a lot of angst from the community, so we see no reason to close in that particular situation. As was the case in Lambert and Denmark, we had quite a few student cases, we had staff cases, instruction was definitely starting to be compromised, and there was increased angst from both of those communities. Talking to those two principals, we felt like we had reached the time where we need to shut down for a couple of weeks, transition to all virtual, and then hopefully get our students back and get our numbers down. Fortunately for Lambert, we were out for two weeks. They've been back. We've only had one or two cases, and very few students have been quarantined since Lambert has returned. Hopefully, we see the same thing when Denmark comes back. The other question that was asked, absolutely, every school is thoroughly cleaned before we allow students to return to campus. We have foggers, those industrial foggers that are used throughout the country. We can clean an entire school in about four hours, and we do it after hours when nobody's around, so they get the deep cleaning that they need before our students and staff return, so that those buildings are very clean, well-maintained, and very safe. So with that, there are a couple of recommendations, amendments I want to make to our guidelines when we adopted them this summer before school reopen.[1787.95] Number one, under the issue of masks, I am recommending that the board approve effective immediately that all Forsyth County school staff are required to wear a mask in the presence of students if they are unable to social distance. That would be an amendment to what you adopted this summer. Just to remind you, this summer, when you adopted these guidelines, it was that transportation and food service employees only were required to wear a mask when in the presence of students. Now I am recommending all staff be required to wear a mask in the presence of students if they are unable to social distance. That's a very important comment, and the reason I say that, there are times when teachers are teaching and they are able to socially distance from their entire students and be at least six feet away. That mask sometimes needs to come down so students can hear their teachers giving the instruction. Whether it's reading a story or giving instruction for an assignment, a student in the back of the room may be at a disadvantage if the teacher is wearing a mask and that sound is muffled. But again, they have to be social distanced before they're able to drop that mask. Obviously, if they're drinking and eating, they can't wear a mask when they're doing that. Number two, the other recommended amendment I would make, masks now be required for visitors attending after-school athletics and activities. That's the other amendment I would recommend you adopt tonight. That was not in place when we started the school year. As you know, most of our fall events are outside, and people typically could social distance if they chose to do so. I know there are examples where we've seen where people are choosing not to social distance. But now we are saying we're into the winter season. Most activities and athletics happen indoors, and so I'm recommending that we require visitors attending those activities and events to wear a mask. So those are the two recommendations I'm making tonight. Again, I reserve the right to come back at a further time to make additional recommendations to this board for amendments if necessary. We will continue to follow the data as we do every day. I will give you a report back after I meet with the Department of Health later this week. And I share our data with them to see if there's anything we need to do to revise protocols in our community based on our data. We've got about four months of data now. We know exactly what we've dealt with, and I want to share all that with the Department of Health and see if we need to maybe revise some protocols. So with that, any questions or comments before one of you makes a motion?
Is it not fair to say that the cases that we have seen arising in our schools are, by and large, arising from social circumstances?
Yes, I think that is very fair to say. We know for a fact that there have been some social situations outside of school where a handful of students have contracted the virus who were all at the same event, and it was a non-school event. Very, not, not very hard, impossible for us to control. We can only can do what we can do when they're on school grounds.
What about our community numbers? How are they looking compared to what they were when we first started?
As of yesterday afternoon, we were, you're going to check my memory. We were like at 0.18% of our community currently with the virus. Now, that 0.18%, again, sounds like a low number percentage-wise, but that percentage has gone up quite significantly over the last few weeks. One of the reports I get from the Department of Health is the number of cases per 100,000 residents. And a couple of weeks ago, that was down to around 80. As of this afternoon, it was back up to 200 per 100,000 residents. So you see what's happening. It mirrors what's going on in our school system. You're seeing an incremental rise.
Hospitalizations and stuff too, or no?
Hospitalizations have gone up slightly. That's another one we track. From last week to this week, Darla, I think we've seen like three or four additional hospitalizations. And I think there's been one additional death in our community in the last week and a half. Again, I get that every single day, but I'm going off memory. I know there was one death, and I want to say three or four hospitalizations as well. But again, when you extrapolate the data and you break it down percentage-wise, you know, it's about 0.17, 0.18% of our community right now. Again, percentage-wise sounds low, but it's certainly higher than it was a few weeks ago, which has been predicted as it gets, I mean, it hasn't been very cold here. But as it gets colder in the winter months and people are inside more, you know, health experts all over the country are suggesting we're going to see an increase in cases.
Yeah, so what we're doing is a real message to the whole community, not just our educational system, but we're seeing it here. It reflects what the community's doing.
Well, yeah, I will tell you one thing that, I'll just say it, I'm not going to name the establishment, but what's frustrating as a school system, you're right, you know, we put protocols in place. You know, our students, by and large, are doing the right thing. Granted, they're all wearing a mask at all times, but a pretty significant percentage are. Certainly washing their hands and, you know, set up corridors for social distancing, doing what we can to mitigate the spread. I did a takeout order for dinner Friday, and I went into the establishment, and I was the only person in there wearing a mask. And it was a lot of people. I mean, the employees were, but I was the only customer walked in for a takeout order wearing a mask. And, you know, I left there feeling a little bit, yes, this is kind of frustrating, you know? We're trying as a school system to promote doing the right thing that health experts are recommending, but by and large, a lot of folks in our community are not. And so it is what it is. We're dealing with it.
I get that we're all tired of it. I think we all, you know, don't like wearing masks. But to me, we just need to have an end goal in mind, and the sooner we all just step up and do what we need to do to be safe and help each other out, we'll be through this faster. So we kind of have to go back to some kind of a, at least some kind of a comfortable level between the strictness we were at in the spring and then this, what's the word, the, what they say now that people are, what's the word, we're over it now. But we need to find some kind of a happy medium where we're being sensible and using our masks and doing, doing the right thing so that we can get through this faster. I don't want to do this forever, so implore people to please, especially with the holidays coming up, to please be safe around other people.
Well, I think that we have to be adaptable like you're doing, you know? You have to look at the data, you have to look at what's going on out there, and have to look at the bigger picture. Be willing to change the guidelines as we go, be willing to work with the Department of Health. And I think we have to be open-minded to that for our community to know that. But it's also, to me, it's a community thing, and the school system is trying to manage that community. And we need to do better, you know, as leaders to be in the community and saying that this is what we're doing and how we're, we act. And when we go out, we wear masks, things along those lines. And so as long as we're adapting and we're going as we look, and we're always looking at this, and we're not just going to say this is the way it is and it's going to be that way, I think we'll be fine as a school system.
Any other questions or comments for you?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. That has been, yeah. Yeah, there is no, there is no data to support us closing the school system down after Thanksgiving. Like I said to you earlier, you know, the highest percentage of quarantined students we've had district-wide since this has started has been around that 3.5%. To me, that is nowhere near the number we would need to get to to say we're shutting the entire district down. And I would say also, if you did that, students and families are not going to quarantine in their home. They're going to be out and about in the community. And I would, I would argue in a lot of ways, students are safer on our campus than they are gathering together in social settings outside of the school day. And so, thank you for bringing that up. I've heard the rumor too. I've actually responded to a few emails. There is no truth to that whatsoever. We plan on coming back after Thanksgiving break. And as we always do, we'll take it day by day, week by week, and data will control decisions. Data will control decisions. Anything else?
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Kristen and a second from Tom. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Next are points of information.
I did want to add one thing. Thank you. It was announced earlier today that Dr. Josh Low, Assistant Principal at Forsyth Central High School, has been named the Georgia Assistant Principal of the Year, which we're really excited about for Josh and congratulate him on that distinction. It's a great job.
That's it.
That's great. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Darla, a second from Tom. All in favor?